Good evening, Chair. Calls are ordered. Zoning Board of Appeals for zoning board of appeals case number 5984. Ms. Countless, you're with us this evening? Please come forward. Ms. Countless, as the applicant, you'll have 15 minutes to present your case to the zoning appeals board, and after that, we may have some questions.
Thank you for hearing my request.
Yes, ma'am.
There are several reasons that I believe the denial of my variance should be reviewed and revised. For the purpose of keeping my thoughts together, I have written them down, and throughout the hearing, maybe looking down, but I'm paying full attention to the matter. There are four points that I'm asking the hearing committee to consider. Point number one, the transcript. On the original hearing date, the hearing officer stated, end quote, "I will leave the case open, get a letter from your HOA telling me it is approved as located, as located it is approved," end quote. He told me that if I've gotten approval from my HOA to leave the shed at its current location, then he would leave the case open. So at the hearing officer's request, I was in fact able to procure my HOA approval. I emailed a copy of the approval on June 1st and made the required modifications. The HOA decided that if I removed four feet from the shed, I would no longer be in violation of any easement law. I paid $1,200 to cut off four feet. I got the approval, however, I'm no longer in violation of any easement, but my variance was denied. I would just like to add that I complied with the hearing officer's request, and I do have a copy, which I'm sure you already have copies of, the transcripts as required, but I did bring a copy of it. I also have a copy of the approval as he requested. In addition to that, I brought just a copy of the email that I sent to Dottie, you know, to submit to the hearing officer as he requested, so I complied with his request for approval.
Oh, well, that's all in the record.
Yes, it's in the record. Yes, sir.
And the council members involved read the records.
Yes, so, I don't know if he has the email that I sent, but it's... Okay. Number two, detriment. That was also something that was a part of the decision. granting my variance would not be substantial detriment to my neighbors or any of our community. The shed does not pose a threat to public safety, as it does not block any signs, it does not impede any walkways, it does not obstruct any views for my neighbors, the neighborhood or passerbyers on foot, bike, or car. It does not hinder fire hydrants, access, and lastly, there are no power or utility lines near my shed. Neighbors on both sides of my home testified, and just to reiterate, it is in the record. Both of my neighbors on both of my sides where I live at, all of my neighbors did sign the consent that the shed could stay there, but they showed up just as their support to ensure that all considerations regarding the shed, you know, that there wasn't a problem. Number three, case law. In the case of Chelsea versus City of Annapolis, there is a fundamental difference, and because of this, our cases are not the same and are not similar, I'm sorry, and are similar in that we both were requesting a variance. In the Chelsea case, he or she had a structure built with full prior knowledge that they would require a variance. In this regard, Chelsea took a gamble, however, I did not. I did not know that I would require a variance. I obtained prior consent and prior approval from my HOA in accordance with my community policies. I procured the necessary permits, and unlike Chelsea, I was unable to foresee that I would in the future require a variance. Had I known at any time that moving the shed where it was, I could have, and the HOA hadn't given me prior approval, and the pool company didn't pull prior permits, I would have known that maybe we needed to make some modifications to the size of the pool. So I just wanted to also make clarity about that. So the cases are totally, that was cited, are not the same. Hardship is my last point, gentlemen and ladies, I'd like to make. I do not, I did not create my own hardship. I followed all of the proper procedures and protocols. It was one year into the pool bill that I was alerted that my shed was a potential issue. Had I been aware of these possible issues sooner, then I could have made the necessary size and allotment to the pool. However, by the time I was made aware, my pool project was underway, and there was nothing I could do. In conclusion, I'm humbly asking this committee to reconsider my variance largely in part to the fact that in accordance with the county's policies, granting this variance would be substantially detrimental to adjacent properties or the public interest. Additionally, I'm asking for the variance because not allowing the variance would result in an unreasonable hardship, a hardship that contrary to the decision, I did not self-inflate. As a county and community member, I obtained prior permissions and approvals. I did not go rogue and simply choose to ignore any rules. The hard truth is the HOA took over a year to make me aware that my shed posed a potential problem, and that was not my fault, and therefore, I simply did not cause my own hardship as stated in the decision. However, denying this variance would create an unreasonable hardship, because after paying an additional $1,200 to keep the shed where it is currently located, I simply did not have the resources to, I simply do not have the resources to move it. And lastly, I would ask that the committee to recognize that the fundamental differences in my case and Chelsea's case, I had no prior knowledge that I would need a variance. In that case, they chose to ignore policies? That is not what I did and I have ever done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Countless. You'll have a little over nine minutes left, if you would like to use it. Council members at this time, any questions pertaining to the text? Yes, ma'am.
And I also have pictures of the modified shed as required by the hearing officer, if you need them. I have the pictures that are in the documents that they submitted originally, and then I have the modified shed, which shows the four foot, which puts me in compliance with county easement regulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
If you need it.
Counsel, again, any questions? Mr. Pennman?
The modified shed, I remember seeing pictures of before. Do we have, is it in the packet here?
No, because it was not before the zoning hearing examiner, and this case is a request for final argument of the decision that was made by the zoning hearing examiner, based upon all the evidence that was before him and all the arguments that were made to him. So that's why we don't have it. It has occurred in time after the conclusion of the hearing.
So we don't know if the modified shed is in violation of the code at this point?
Well, no, and quite frankly, it's not relevant for the purposes of this. Now, having said that, I guess planning and zoning would potentially know whether it's in compliance or not.
Very well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pennman and Emma Lewis. Mr. Riley?
Mr. Barney, we don't have that from the planning and zoning.
We have all the documents.
No, no, we don't have the fact that the modified shed is in compliance.
Correct, correct. Because the shed was modified.
After the fact, according to the testimony.
As requested by the hearing officer.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Guthrie?
So they talk about modification. Did you enlarge the shed from its original size?
No, I reduced it, sir.
Reduced it?
Yes, sir, about four foot, all the way around in the perimeter.
How long was the shed on your property before you moved it?
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years?
Yes, sir.
Did you put it on there originally?
Yes, sir.
Or what, did you buy it with the house?
No, I did not buy it with the house. It was actually gifted to me by a neighbor who family member had gotten ill, and the neighborhood all got together to kind of facilitate them, you know, in the move, and it was gifted to me.
Did you get a permit?
I did go to the HOA at the time again and request, was it okay to have the shed relocated from my neighbor's yard to my yard?
Well, not with the HOA, but the county. Did you get a permit from the county?
No, sir, I didn't. I didn't know at that time that I required a permit. Again, I went to the HOA. If I had known about the permit process, you know, I had a pool built, so no one ever in eighteen years said that, and I feel like a fool, but I just didn't know.
So the pool, I mean, the shed right now is where you moved it to?
Yes, and it's in the relocated place where I had relocated it, and where, like I said, the hearing officer said it had to be approved in that location. So yes, sir, it is there.
I noticed in some of the pictures, the shed was up near the house, and it looked like it was, the dirt was down, and there was a support to hold it up on one end. Is that the case with it?
Well, basically, I didn't know I had two front yards. The shed is technically, I thought I was putting it in my backyard, because everything is in the backyard, but the county code says, because I'm on an in-house, I had two front yards. None of us, not the neighbors, knew, anyone knew that we had two front yards. So although it was technically in the back of my house, in my backyard, that's why it's in violation, because I have two front yards. I hope I answered your question.
I did. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie and Mr. Janjordano.
Good evening, ma'am. How are you today? I know you're a little bit nervous, but you're doing a good job, so.
Thank you, sir.
So I understand. I'm in a corner a lot, too, so I feel your pain a little bit. The pictures that are in here, are they from when you put the pool in originally? They're, it seems like the ground is disturbed, and the pool, you know, I could see the piping and stuff out of there, so it looks like they're much old, you know, you said it was around for eighteen years. Are these older pictures?
No.
No?
No, sir. Basically, what happened is the pool builder, and I hope I'm answering your question, I'm trying to answer quickly, the pool builder was Catalina Pools.
Okay.
Who came in, moved everything around.
Ma'am, can you bring the microphone closer to you?
I'm sorry, the pool builder was Catalina Pools, and I'm sure you got mine, but I heard about it, that went out of business. So they came in, they moved everything around, they got all the permits, I left everything to them, the electric, the plumbing, the shed, everything, and they moved everything. So the reason why it's still dirt and everything out there, because the pool didn't even get finished until literally this year. So that's why you still see it, and it looks so disturbed, because the project actually took over two and a half years.
Okay. But the shed's been there for eighteen years, you just had the pool built recently, and they haven't come and finished it and put the fence up and everything else around.
Yes, sir.
So the shed will be in, around the fence, the picture that we have of the shed is not the reduced shed, it's the old shed, and you've got two front yards, and you're, I think the issue is one of it's that you're twenty-five or thirty feet is the variance is what I think they were.
I apologize, that's in the wrong.
That's okay.
It's actually all. I think I actually, it's probably not a really good picture, but I do have a picture of the reduced shed, if that is, I don't know if I could submit that, because it's after the fact, but I do have a picture of the reduced shed, the size that it is now.
Do you have, and I know I saw one of the things in here, and I don't see the answer to that, but do you have the actual approval that they talked about from the HOA now of where the shed is located?
Yes, what I did is I had to, and they went into great detail in my approval letter, because I guess they didn't want it to happen what we just recently happened on May 31st. I do have it. So what I had to do is I had to submit a new drawing from Dooley's. They had the companies to come out and map out everything, so I had to submit all of that where it actually is and where everything was going to be, and this is the approval letter.
Okay.
That I received, and I sent it to the hearing officer.
Do we have a copy of that approval letter? That's in there, too? Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Anyone else? Ms. Countless, do you have any closing comments? You still have time.
No, again, I just hope that, I would like to say that I'm a good neighbor, and I take very good care of my property. I did all of my due diligence, and to assure that I complied with the letter of the law and every policy that I was aware of and that I was made aware of. When you have a project like that, you submit your documents to your HOA, and they, and to your builders and your contractors, and when you have a project at large, it is no way that you know what electrical permits you need to pull, or what pool permits you need to pull. You pay people for those type of services. So I relied on that. Again, had I known, I could have done something different, so as is stated in this document that I brought undue hardship on myself, that's just simply not true, and please consider the fact that the precedence that was used to set to make the decision is fundamentally nowhere even close to what happened with me. And I thank you for your time, gentlemen and ladies.
Well, we thank you for your presentation this evening, ma'am. This will conclude the zoning appeal case for number 5984, and it will be taken up at a different meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. We're going to move right into regular session, if I may. I would like to ask you to all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and followed by opening prayer by Councilmember Bennett.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In recognition of Rosh Hashanah, I'd like to share a traditional grace from that holiday. We praise you, eternal God, sovereign of the universe, creator of the fruit of the tree. May it be your will, eternal our God, that this be a good and sweet year for us. Amen.
Counsel, if I may, I would like to take a second to recognize our Howard County's County Executive Calvin Ball is with us this evening. It's a pleasure to see you, sir. Michael Sanderson from Mako, it's a pleasure to see you as well, and I'm sure we'll be hearing from you shortly. Agenda number four, presentation of proclamations. I'll catch him later. Presentation of proclamations. This September is National Recovery Month, and if I may, I would like to have a few people to come forward here and join me up front. Ms. Linda Williams. Sidney Shoup from the clubhouse. Wendy Beck. And Rachel Bonjourne. Margaret Kaiser, Hartford Community Services, or Hartford County Community Services, I'm sorry. Tara Lathrow. Derek Hopkins from Shar Hope. Our Register of Wills. Mr. Dan McKinney from Department of Emergency Services.
Whereas National Recovery Month is a national observance held every September to promote and support new evidence-based treatment and recovery practices, the emergence of a strong and proud recovery community, and the dedication of service providers and community members across the nation who make recovery possible, and whereas, the theme for National Recovery Month 2023 is, "Join the Voices for Recovery. Together We Are Strong." This year's focus in Recovery Month is on the first responders, healthcare workers, community leaders, and advocates helping to support recovery in our society, and whereas this September, Hartford County Government, Hartford County Health Department, Hartford County Sheriff's Office, Healthy Hartford, the Town of Bel Air, local municipalities, University of Maryland Upper Chesapeake Health, the Klein Family Crisis Center, and numerous other partners are coming together throughout Hartford County to celebrate National Recovery Month. Now, therefore, we, the County Council of Hartford County, Maryland, on this nineteenth day of September 2023, do hereby proclaim National Recovery Month, September 2023, and thank our providers and citizens for their dedication to the health of the Hartford County community.
Congratulations. If I may, I want to take a minute and just thank you, all of you, for the great work that you do throughout Hartford County and beyond. So many people rely on the services that you provide. We don't have enough time to speak to it here tonight. Each one of your individual organizations are outstanding, and my colleagues and I want to take a minute to recognize you, and because I'm standing next to you, Linda, I'm going to present this proclamation to you on behalf of the council.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I love you.
I know you're, you know, easy to speak, so, yes, come on, come on, come on, pass it on.
I don't think everyone realizes how important recovery is. Most of the people here, we support the recovery community every day. We meet the people where they're at. We try not to be judgmental. We also, and treatment is so much more available now, that I feel that the funds and the focus need to be on keeping those in recovery that are there. So I'm hoping that we can do much more in the county, all of us together, and I think we're going to all work towards a recovery center, and I think that we're just going to keep doing the work that we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Well, I can tell you, being one who supports those in recovery, it takes a village, and what's amazing is it's not just one house, it's not just two houses, it's all of us working together on a daily basis to achieve a common goal, and that's to save lives. And I see it from both sides. I see it being in the fire service, and I also see it as being a man who runs two houses with an amazing group, and again, with all the support of these here folks before us. Thank you.
EMS in Hartford County, and the volunteer service is growing. Every day calls increase. It's actually, the providers now take time to get to know that patient that they're engaging, give them the resources that they need, and sometimes sit on scene and wait for these ladies to show up for mobile crisis. So we're all doing our part, and like you said, it takes a village.
Thank you.
I just don't want to block it out.
Block the sun.
I'm standing up here, and I'm still shorter.
And you got high heels on.
Next time, give me a bigger pair, Deion.
and nomination. Council appointment, Board of Education liaison may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve Councilmember Bennett to the Board of Education Liaison.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's moved to second to approve the appointment of Councilmember Bennett to the Board of Education, a liaison position. Any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Executive appointments, Department of Social Services Advisory Board may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve the new appointment of James Cutterback.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's moved to second to approve the new appointment of James Cutterback to the Department of Social Services Advisory Board. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Citizens Nursing Home Board of Directors may have a motion. Mr. Bennett?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Commission on Disabilities may have a motion. Mr. Guthrie?
Mr. President, I'm going to appoint, well, the name's missing here.
Rachel Harbin?
Rachel Harper to the Commission on Disabilities.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. It's been moved to second to approve the new appointment of Rachel Harbin to the Commission on Disabilities. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Agenda number six, special presentations. Again, it's my pleasure and honor to welcome both County Executive Ball and Mr. Sanderson from Mako for their annual update. Gentlemen?
Thank you, Mr. President. It is quite an honor to be here before you. I am Calvin Ball, the President of the Maryland Association of Counties. I also sit as the County Executive of Howard County, the other H-county. Before I was County Executive, and I've been so for about five years, I spent about thirteen years on our county council, and so I definitely understand and appreciate the roles that you all play. I want to thank each and every one of you for being active in Mako. Councilmember Pennman has been very active in our legislative committee, and Councilmember Guthrie and I go back pretty far also, so I really appreciate it. I appreciate your time. I know that you have a robust agenda, although you have been very efficient thus far, so kudos to you. But with that, I want to turn it over to Michael Sanderson, our Executive Director, who will run through some of the high-level items, and then we can have conversation, questions, anything else that you'd like, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thanks very much for your time this evening. Again, I'm Michael Sanderson. I'm the Director of the Maryland Association of Counties. We serve, represent, and advocate on behalf of county officials and all the services that we provide to Marylanders across the state. Part of that is working in Annapolis on your behalf, part of it is member education and peer exchange and all those sorts of things, try and help you all do your jobs well and serve your residents well. As is our want, I prepared a big packet of materials. A lot of that is drawn from our Conduit Street blog, which is intended to be a source of information, an aggregator, so forth, of different things that are of value to you. Tend to bring a big packet of stuff and then delight you with the news that I'm not going to go through it. And that's usually a good way to start things off, but I want to put some of those resources into your hands, and if there's anything you'd like to follow up on there, that's great. I'd like to spend just a few minutes on a choice number of topics. I'll walk through these relatively quickly, and if there's something you'd like to discuss further, or if I owe it, let's spend time on that at your request. I'll spend a couple minutes on the state's fiscal situation overall, just because that's For the last year and a half or so, the state has seen relatively healthy numbers from its immediate revenues. Things like the income tax and sales tax, more or less of a reflection of the economy of right this moment. And we closed out last budget year with a $2 billion surplus. It left the budget that was just settled back during this last legislative session to be a relatively easy one. Governor Moore inherited a situation where it was, yes, we can afford all the autopilot things and formulas and so forth, and it wasn't a whole lot of consternation building the current year's budget. However, they got about midway through the legislative session, Annapolis sort of finalizes its revenue projections in March, so they can balance to that number in April, and the March adjustment was a downward number, and it felt like the first balloon got popped at the party. So maybe that is the end of sort of a pontooned economy and back to reality a little bit. For those of you who are at the Mako Summer Conference, we usually have the governor do a close-out presentation, and frequently, that's an opportunity to talk about the next big thing. I'm going to launch an initiative, or we're going to go full bore on this big problem. Governor talked about some economic opportunities and how Maryland has some gains to make and how we can capitalize on our strengths, but then he also spent a good deal of time talking about constraints that we've got as a function of federal funds are drying up and a number of things that we've been, you know, using ARPA dollars and so forth. That's just not going to continue forever. So he talked about fiscal discipline and restraint and so forth as part of his message as well. I would connect that to the state does its next round of revenue forecasts being updated later this month. I think the smart money is that that'll be another downward revision in that forecast. So the Maryland economy looks like it's softening up. We get remittances from businesses collecting sales tax, and folks who are, you know, working will have withholding on their income. So we have a decent idea, sort of week by week, month by month, how things look. And if the state ends up elevating its current forecast of about a $400 million shortfall on the sort of the vanilla budget plan for next year, if that number gets much higher than that, then that'll be more than just nip and tuck and look under the couch cushions. If that number goes from 400 to six or eight or something like that, and I think that's a decent guess, then it may be a bona fide belt-tightening kind of environment next legislative session and the next budget year. We got a couple of years off from having to play a lot of meaningful defense in the state budget process, but we may be back in that environment where the legislative staff may be looking at, well, we could save some money by shifting a cost here or there, and some squeeze on local health departments or local jails or other things like that. We've seen a lot of these traps before. There are things that pop up when things get tight. We'll be there to defend you, but that kind of stuff, that might be the environment we're in. What does that mean for education spending? Right now, you know, we're three or so years into the 10-year plan for improvement in our public schools, the blueprint for Maryland. Counties are feeling the pressure already. It's already by far the biggest driver in county budget affordability and planning. The state's a little bit behind us. There's a weird circumstance where Maryland voters sort of created a lockbox for mostly casino revenue to go into an education trust fund and said, that's supposed to be for educational improvements, not just to fund what we're doing already. So that money sort of accumulated for three or four years before the blueprint really kicked in and started having a price tag. This means they've got a sock with money in it to take care of their blueprint costs for '24, and into '25, and into most of '26. So while we have local jurisdictions who are already finding their number for the blueprint says, well, we've got to find an 11% increase in our school budget, how are we supposed to do that and fund the other 45% of our county budget? The state isn't quite in that posture yet, but they don't have to look too far out to see themselves in '27 feeling pressure from the plan that they've already basically assembled and committed to. I don't know whether that means there'll be a full-scale, top-to-bottom, like, you know, I don't think there'll be a full reboot, but some assessment of what's affordable short-term and what are the intermediate timetables between now and the ultimate goals. I think some of those issues may be on the table for this coming legislative session. They've got, you know, they've got fiscal issues large, and the education funding are the biggest dollars among all the movers into budgets, both at the state and county level. Let me jump through a couple more things more rapidly than that. Over the last couple of years, the state legislature has built a paid family leave program for public and private employers. They created the program in '22, they had to come back in '23 and tidy some things up. We were very engaged to make sure that there was a clear off-ramp for entities like, in Alcander, I think county governments who already are in the benefits business, to opt out of the state system and run your own program. So we got the timetables and process for that all cleared up with the follow-up legislation this year, and Mako is working closely with our sister organizations, the Association of Boards Education and the Municipal League. We think we're going to see a big group of local governments pool together to provide these services, opt out of the state program, provide this directly. One of the benefits of doing so is you miss, there's a strange timetable that the state has to basically populate its fund, has to get money into its trust fund before they can start sending out benefits. So private employers who stay in the state system, there'll be a 15-month period where they're paying in, paying premiums into the state system before benefits are available. You can miss that window by doing your own thing, getting approved by the state. We think the idea of 50, 60, 80 local units all going together will get us the best price in the marketplace for the providers, and also a quick access to the state for approval of the one big plan. So anticipate, you'll probably be hearing about that as an option, and I think it may very well make sense for Hartford County. Third topic I'll mention briefly is the voters spoke on making cannabis use, adult use legal under Maryland laws. The implementation started back on July 1 in Alcander. Some of that was the easiest stuff as far as citing and licensing goes, because that was existing medical facilities going to commercial. What we still got ahead of us is another wave of additional licensees who are going to want their state license, they'll want approval on site locations and so forth. The state didn't do us a whole lot of favors with their implementing legislation, big, long, must-pass bill. They created a peculiar standard for zoning approval, for the location of the licenses. The words reasonable zoning appear in the cannabis bill. They've never appeared in Maryland law anywhere before, so your planning departments understand that there's a whole stack of case law that says what is and is not reasonable in zoning, but reasonable zoning is a new defined term. So maybe we'll end up in court, or maybe back in the legislature trying to get some of those things refined. If the legislature opens the books on that, maybe they take another swing at giving a fair shake at local governments for a piece of the revenue pie, where we got really a really small slice of a relatively small pie. I will say there was a deliberate decision by the General Assembly to not overtax the legal product. There are a few states that have maybe gone too far in this direction. If you tax the growers and then the distributors, and then at the retail sale, and you end up with 40, 50, 60% aggregate tax rate, you end up with folks who might want to buy legally saying, I'd rather just go back to the illegal guy on the old corner, and you miss the social benefits and potential health benefits of having a regulated, overseen product and so forth as opposed to where we used to be. So we're going to try and avoid that, but maybe have missed the muck. And local governments, counties, and our municipal friends have left out a much, much smaller slice than in other states. So I'll close with one more item, and I'm doing so at the neglect of other things that are in our packet and have been on our minds, but I'll mention, this has been coming up as County Executive Ball and I have been visiting with your counterparts in other counties. Counties, large and small, are having just a devil of a time bringing in new firefighters. Delivering EMS service is its own challenge, and we got a number of jurisdictions who are reframing that, but just volunteer fire and career firefighters, there's just not the generation walking in the door to replace folks who probably earned the right to be walking out the door. We got a lot of folks who are decades and decades long in service, and they're still running calls for lack of 28-year-olds walking in the door. So Annapolis sometimes likes when you have a vexing issue, you bring everybody together, you do a task force or a commission, that sort of thing. That's where we are now, trying to gather information so we can end up with a package of proposals that the volunteers are comfortable with, the careers are comfortable with, and ask the state to give us some more assistance and sort of like double down on efforts that we're making locally. We've got some tools in the toolbox, but maybe we need some more stuff with education assistance, or tuition reimbursement, or other things along those lines that might be more attractive to the firefighters of tomorrow. We need more folks in the door, particularly for areas that want to continue to have volunteer service.
Yes.
So all those are issues that Mako is focused on, and I've left an awful lot of things off the list, but I want to be respectful of your time and agenda. So if any of those things we didn't get into enough, or you want to talk about other stuff, that would be great. We'd love to listen as well.
Appreciate that. Mr. Sanderson, we're going to let Mr. Pennman take the lead.
Thank you, Mr. Sanderson, County Executive. Thank you for being here. I tell you, just 10 months into this, I'm super impressed with Mako. You have a small but mighty team, and just the wealth of knowledge and the complexities of each of the legislative items and the knowledge that you have to produce in those committees, in those subcommittees, just to inform the local legislators, the unintended consequences or the intended consequences of each of those bills. So I applaud you both and your organizations for being able to provide that services to the state of Maryland. I also look forward to my alternate, Jim Riley, joining me down in Mako this year. But I did want, have one question I want to bring to your attention, just on your radar. I don't expect you to have an answer for it, but, and it concerns the local reserve fund. Lyerbin, Comptroller Lyerbin, excuse me, was here, and she did a great job presenting, and we discussed the local reserve fund. And my issue is, particularly in 2008 and 2009, there was a transfer of over $900 million from that local reserve fund. And as you know, that reserve fund is where the state collects the money and then disperses it back out to the county. At a time, 2008, when, you know, it was basically a financial crash, they took $900 million from that, and no repayment has ever been made. There was an effort in 2014 to try to repay that, starting in 2021, and to my knowledge, just doing the research, each year that has been suspended, that repayment has been suspended over like $33 million roughly. So I'm just learning all this, I'm hoping to kind of bring this forward and just have further dialogue on how we get that money back that was taken from the counties and the local reserve fund. So again, I don't expect you to have an answer, just kind of want to put it on your radar and look forward to working with you on it.
Sure. Thank you.
So I appreciate you raising the issue. It is a little bit technical for this forum, something I'd be happy to follow up with you on. I'm pretty well-versed in the topic. I think in the grand scheme, the most important thing for you all to know as custodians of the county trust and your stake in this is, this has never amounted to a nickel being shorted to any county for the income tax that was due from your residents. So what we're talking about is sort of a holding account that the state maintains. They put money in that account so that there's a check, so that there's an account to draw from when it's time to make the local distributions. So that's never resulted in, oh, Hartford County's only going to get 87 cents on the dollar because that fund has fewer dollars than it would have otherwise. So if I write you a check to pay for a bicycle, you know, at your garage sale, do you care how much is in my checking account? Just as long as the check clears, you and I are basically fine. I think that's a reasonable way to frame this issue, but the technicalities, I'm familiar with the fiscal staff of the county who are on this issue as well, and I'm happy to follow up with you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you all for being here. Calvin, good to see you again. Or do I have to say, Mr. Ball, since now you're County Executive?
I'll always be Cal.
I used to be Calvin, you weren't a council. Listen, I appreciate, I can't tell you enough about the job you do down there. As a graduate of the program down there also, this was my 13th conference at Mako. And you keep learning all the time. It's just, I can't begin to tell you, it's one of the best conferences that any elected official can go to. The educators is there if you want it, and you never see, all the rooms are packed. I mean, everybody's there to learn what they can learn. And what's really great, when you start socializing, you meet, talk to other, the council members from other districts, you know, it's surprising, some of the same issues you got, they got, you know, and then you find out how they solve theirs, and they ask you questions and things that you solved. And so it's really a pleasure to see you all here, and again, keep up this conference. It's great, and I can't wait until next year, or maybe the fall, depending.
Well, thank you so much. Our summer conference attendance was up 30%. Largest turnout that we've had. The team works incredibly hard, led by Michael. You know, every session, they analyze very carefully, somewhere between 700 and 800 pieces of legislation, and continue to advocate on the county's behalf to ensure that the local voice isn't forgotten. And I too am a graduate, and those of you who have not had an opportunity to go through the process of the academy for excellence, please consider it's a partnership with College Park. And there are so many helpful classes that you can attend that will help ensure that, you know, you have a strong base, and then, as Councilmember Guthrie said, then there's the other conversations where you can really learn from each other, because the stronger each and every county is, the stronger the state is, and we can only do that together.
Correct. Mr. Janjordano?
So, thank you, County Executive Ball, it's easy name to say, so, Mr. Sanderson, good evening, sir, how are you? My question is, the paid leave law, is there going to be, and I know I deal with a lot of small businesses, is there a minimum number, like if you're under 15, like some of the other things, it's not going to apply? Or is it for everybody as long as you have one employee or more?
Thank you.
Is there an answer to that?
Yeah, there is an answer, and I'm at risk if I try to quote you chapter and verse. It's not as simple as employers with, like, fewer than 15 employees are just completely exempted. I think the benefits are available for everybody. There's an open question whether there has to be an assessment on the employees for the smallest employers, but I think the vision of creating this as an insurance program was meant to try and model what we do with unemployment insurance, that everybody pays a little sliver into the big fund, and then that's where the benefits come from. So the bike shop has three people on leave, they don't get drowned by paying those benefits directly, so.
It'll cover part-time as well as full-time?
It's based on a certain number of hours, but I think it's in the neighborhood of 600 hours work over the prior year, so that's going to cover an awful lot of full-time folks.
I'm going to task you with a, something else is that, when I went down to Mako and I signed up for my classes, I am not in the system anymore. They couldn't find any of my classes. So I couldn't take the classes I need to take to finish to get a degree like County Executive Ball over here. And nobody has any idea.
It's because you failed.
We're going to work on that, Councilmember.
So I, therefore, I didn't know what classes to take to get my degree or something.
We'll make sure by the time the winter conference rolls around, you'll be taken care of.
They've been good partners with us, and I can pride them. They have an oversight council of the academy. I sit on their council, so I can raise it with them.
Just let me know who to contact. And you said 13 years, that's odd. How did you come up with 13 years?
So I finished up someone else's term, and then we're term limited to 12.
So three terms?
Yep, so I did three terms and wrapped up a year or so of someone else's.
Trying to figure that out, and I couldn't do it. I'm a math guy, and that bugged me. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming up, and by the way, welcome to my hometown of Bel Air, so, you know?
Thank you very much.
If you've never been here, happy you're here. Got some good restaurants. Stop and eat a bite before you leave.
Are you done now?
Yeah, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Mr. Bennett?
Hello. It's nice to see you again. In reference to Blueprint, because that was a big part of what you shared, you know, outside of being a councilmember, which I think every local government in the state is dealing with the stress and the strain of implementation of the Blueprint and the timeline, 2027 is a looming date that used to seem farther away. But in my other hat, as an early childhood educator, a public school kindergarten teacher, you know, I've gone through and I've read every local school system's implementation plan, and what I see over and over in implementation plans is requests for exemption or extension, because there's a strain on the school boards as well, not feeling like they can reach those timelines and those goals by 2027 for pre-K expansion, or for career programming, or, you know, community schools. So my question to Mako would be, are you collaborating with the local school boards in a plan that helps with the strain for local school boards and the strain for local governments to be able to... expansion or for career programming or, you know, community schools. So, my question to Mako would be, are you collaborating with the local school boards in a plan that helps the strain for local school boards and the strain for local governments to be able to see viability and feasibility moving forward?
Well, I think we all want to create the best teaching and learning environment for all of our students and all of our educators. I think also, we recognize that we want something that's sustainable and that can actually be funded, that actually achieves those goals. I think there is growing thinking that the Blueprint needs revaluation. And so, we're not only talking, every jurisdiction we've been to thus far, Blueprint has been a top priority. We've been in Southern Maryland, Western Maryland, the shore, and here in Central Maryland. I think, and I appreciate Michael and his team putting together actually conversations with boards of education, because we have a great relationship with MAB, superintendents. And so, I think we are coming to some consensus that we want to move forward in a collaborative fashion that's sustainable. I think, and I'm hopeful that in this upcoming session, there'll be more conversation. I think even the governor and the presiding officers recognize that there's a way to improve. And so, Mako will be at the forefront of those conversations. And like you, and when I, before I became County Executive, I was an educator. My doctorate's in education. And so, I recognize the importance and the opportunity around these conversations. I think that the Blueprint, I think we're all recognizing, has some ways that they can improve.
If I could just add one quick thing, I'll do it best to be quick. But early childhood education and trying to expand pre-K for three-year-olds and four-year-olds is, it's an easy case study in how a plan can have a smart vision up front, but when the pieces don't fall together, you end up into the plan and you're already off track. I sat through every single meeting of the Kerwin Commission. I was even on a thing before that, before it turned into the legislation and then the ultimate Blueprint. And the commission felt really strongly, we're going to have a wave of basically daycare providers are going to come in and want to become fully certified to get into the early childhood education business. And we'll get them all geared up and top-tier, and we'll have all these top-tier offerings all over the place. We're not going to need to build new schools or mini schools or add-ons because places that are right now, you know, daycare for nine kids will become pre-K for nine kids, and it'll work fine. As it turns out, the private providers have not taken the bait in the way that Maryland had hoped and planned. And now, we're left with, there literally is no physical space to make this happen in the next, you know, 36 months.
Right.
So, there's only so much you can do. You can, you know, take a, repurpose a bookstore or whatnot. There are limits to what you can do there. So, we're already looking outside the box to try and reach those goals. But maybe it's a new timetable, maybe it's a new set of expectations, but we still want to get there. How is where we're trying to work together.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. County Executive, as a former graduate, I couldn't agree with you more on the value that you bring in your conference, and the fact that we are graduates and we go back to do follow-up classes and things. I want to thank you for your chairing the Large County Coalition, I believe it was you?
Thank you.
And I thought you did an outstanding job, and we appreciate the ability to be able to go and talk to our colleagues all across the state in different jurisdictions about all sorts of legislation pending or new. It's just so valuable to all of us. And I'm pretty sure that all of us were at Mako this, at the summer session, I believe we all were. So, but I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for the job, Mr. Sanderson, that you do and your team. And I want to thank you for taking time to be with us this evening, and wish you a safe trip back.
We appreciate the partnership and the collaboration, the honor of presenting to you today. So, have a good evening.
Thank you, General.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven, approval of minutes, legislative day 23-023, September 12th, 2023. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, minutes stand approved. Eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Resolution 036-23, Historic Landmark Friendship Farm, may have a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to move Resolution 036-23, Historic Landmark Friendship Farm.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. It's been moved in a second to approve Resolution 036-23. Is there any discussion? Hearing on, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Saddles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Being six, or excuse me, seven votes and the affirmatives, zero and a negative. Resolution 036-23 is hereby approved. Mr. Janjordano, please read Bills 23-030 and 23-031 into the record.
Bill 23-30, Restaurants Moratorium Continuation, introduced by Councilmember Pennman, Guthrie, Janjordano, Boyle Saddles, and Bennett, an act to continue a temporary moratorium on the application of certain provisions of the Harford County zoning code related to setbacks, parking requirements, temporary use, signs, outdoor storage, and display and seating capacity with regard to uses that include nightclubs, bars, breweries, and restaurants. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, October 17th, 2023, at 6:45 PM in these chambers.
Before you move forward, Mr. Kearney, could you add my name to that, please?
That would be the Councilman's trailer.
It was added this afternoon.
It was, and I missed it.
And so was mine also, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody reread it?
No, sir.
Go right ahead.
Bill 23-31, Distribution Hotel Occupancy Tax Revenue, introduced by Councilmembers Guthrie, Pennman, Janjordano, Riley, and Boyle Saddles, an act to repeal and reenact with amendments. Section 123-68, Distribution of Revenue of Article VII Hotel Occupancy Tax of Chapter 123. Finance and taxation of Harford County Code is amended to require 50% of the hotel tax revenue collected from hotels in unincorporated areas of the county to be expanded for certain purposes in the council district where the hotels are located, and generally relating to hotel occupancy tax and finance taxations. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, October 17th, 2023, at 6:45 PM in these chambers.
Thank you. Agenda items number 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14, we have no business this evening. Seventeen, comments and input from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President, we have six speakers this evening.
Sorry.
Our first speaker is Katie Ganano, followed by Diana Sadowski.
Now, Ms. Ganano, I would just remind you, you have three minutes to speak, please. No, ma'am. And also, name and address, please.
Sorry, Katie, it's a long time. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Katie Ganano. I live at 2320 Franklin's Chance Court, Fallston, Maryland 210-47. Good evening, County Council, ladies and gentlemen of Harford County. I'm going to skip over that little part here. Oh, as mentioned before, I have three younger children, two of whom are in youth's benefit elementary school. My seven-year-old is Violet. Mr. Pennman, you've probably become familiar with her name by now. She continues to ask about her, quote, "full school" and what you're planning on doing if and when redistricting happens. Violet is still worried about her friends and coaches in, quote-unquote, "nana papa's" neighborhood, i.e. this is Glen Ellen and Pleasant Prospect. With YBES already being at 104% capacity and the numbers continuing to rise past projections, what will be done after it hits 110%? Last Thursday, I went to YBES to volunteer for my son's class and spent most of my time in the teacher planning room making copies. I could not believe I was making 32, yes, 32 copies of each item for students. Just to be clear, I am not saying that I think children need to currently be redistricted who are attending YBES, just that students and teachers are more than numbers and should be treated as such. I cannot imagine the challenging, challenges of teaching 32 eight-year-olds when half of them don't even know how to tie their own shoes. We need better school forecasting projections. I know this has been brought up at prior meetings. We need building moratoriums. Where are we on APFO? You don't need to answer me this moment. All of you sitting up there know the vast majority of Fallston is opposed to the apartments, except a particular developer who, interestingly enough, I found out, lives on a beautiful...
Ms. Ganano?
Yep.
Move on to something else.
All right, we'll go on to something else. Yep. Our, while Fallston's development envelope might be smaller than other cities, it is currently bursting at the seams. While I understand money is necessary, the proposed apartments at 317 Mountain Road and Route One are short-sighted. All right, I'm going to have to skip over a couple other things. I would like to know how a school bus or a fire truck would be able to enter and exit the premises, both safely and in a timely fashion. Additionally, I'm curious where we are on some negative environmental impacts that I've brought up previously, both in person and via email, and also on the phone with you, Mr. Pennman. I do appreciate your time last week, being in an AE flood zone. I think we need a new land assessment by the Army Corps of Engineers. I've also expressed my concern about that since the last testing was in July of the property, which should be still non-titre wetlands. I do not want my children and their friends to be left with a complete disaster on their hands due to greed and poor planning. Mr. Pennman, I can see your passion with the Sheriff's Department, and I hope you can bring it to the people of Fallston. Mr. Guthrie, I appreciate some of the thoughtful comments you have made over the past couple of weeks. And I hope when, before you go to bed, you think about that seven-year-old girl wanting some answers, because I know she'll be waiting up for me. Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you, ma'am. And before our next speaker steps up, I just want to remind everyone, the last thing I want to do is cut you off, but we do have a public hearing scheduled on October the 2nd for the three bills that are in front of us. That's your time to speak to those subjects. Thank you. Call your next speaker. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Diana Sadowski, 1113 Stromco Drive, Fallston, Maryland. It's good to be here again. I'm sure some of you are thinking, oh, no, not her again. But here I stand in opposition of the overdevelopment that's taking over our beautiful county. After living in Fallston for over four decades, that gem of an area is beginning to look like a cheap piece of costume jewelry, and thanks to the allowed building envelope. I'm laying the blame for this totally on the previous county administrations giving developers carte blanche. Our zoning and responsible development plan for this county is flawed big time. At a stroke of a pen, formerly zoned AG becomes B3, and as I see it, if left unchecked, our AG zones will become the Harco museums of the future. I testified earlier this year that residents do not belong in any business zone areas. That's my personal opinion, and I think a lot of people have that opinion. I stand firm in that belief. I'm not a fan of 15-minute cities. Who wants a city anyway? If we wanted to, we'd be there. They say ignorance is bliss. However, once one knows, it cannot be unknown. We in this fight have spent sleepless nights and many hours educating ourselves on zoning, government procedures and processes, who characters are in the development debacle, the environment, schools, and the list goes on. I say bravo and bravada to everyone who stands and continues to stand in defense of our county and communities. I'm sending a shout-out to our 3P neighbors who have modeled for us how to stand firm, become educated, and demand to be heard by those we elected. If I had an orange cap, I'd be waving it at them. I'm seeing that our Abington neighbors are in a fight to save Abington Woods. So, more constituents are unhappy, Mr. Pennman, and those constituent concerns add to your many work hours. I have fears of an encroaching building envelope in my community. I know it's impossible to have true urban sprawl in Fallston, but it takes more, all it takes is more public water and sewer lines. There's undeveloped property west of Harford Road on 152, and I can only imagine the developer salivating at the thought of getting that medical office building approved and creating another stream of income for himself and his supporters. He even had the audacity to submit this to the county using a justification from the 1980s when Fallston General Hospital was in existence. The Fallston community said no at the last community input meeting held earlier this year, and we will continue to say no when it arises again. It's a fact that the welcome mat has been out too long for developers. This resident, and I'm sure many others throughout the county are working on pulling up that mat from the front door of our communities. We say enough. My six-year-old granddaughter, Lily, who lives in Forest Hill, asked me to deliver this message to you, and I quote, "Please stop building because the habitats of the animals will be gone. They'll lose their homes," unquote. Remember, at a stroke of a pen, our landscapes are changed forever. I know the legacy I want to leave for the next generation. How about you?
Thank you, ma'am.
Tina Graff, followed by Josh Kozel.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Tina Graff, 1732 Boggs Road, Forest Hill, Maryland 21050. On 9/6, I emailed each one of you with questions about a book committee. Mr. Pennman announced on 9/5. I received responses from Councilmen Riley and Bennett claiming they had no knowledge of this committee. President Vincetti responded as well. Councilman Judge Jordan Donau and Councilwoman Boyle Saddles did not respond, and Mr. Pennman responded asking if he could call instead. Eight days later, Councilman Guthrie responded from his personal email, asking if I received his response, and I replied no. The next day, having not received a response, I emailed again, saying, "Please resend your original email." Mr. Guthrie then, through a series of emails, asked me for my email address, which he already had. I responded each time with directions on how to forward an email. His next email to me said, and I quote, "Sorry, can you send your email to this address and I will respond?" I then expressed my concerns, asking why I would resend my email when he already had it, and asked why he was emailing me from his personal account, which I've never sent anything to. His final email to me said, and I quote, "Tell me what you are concerned about, and I will answer. If you can't do that, then stop bothering me." Tonight, I'm here to bother you and tell you that my concerns have now been compounded exponentially. The more I've thought about this, the more angry I've become. Perhaps I should have accepted a personal email to get whatever dirt he was willing to dish out without fear of being spied on. How can we, the people, trust you, our government representatives, if you don't trust each other or your own leadership? In the words of Mr. Casely, this is a theater of the absurd. This is political theatrics. My trust in our county government is minimal. Even your public Facebook page has eliminated the option to see all comments, and you can only choose most relevant and oldest. Who are you to tell me what is relevant? And you delete or hide comments all the time. The Circus Act yesterday was yet another embarrassment to the citizens of Harford County. In discussion of the ineptitude to serve the people, you can't forget that it goes all the way to the top with our county executive and many of the elected officials in this county. Mr. Casely is now engaged in yet another intra-party fight, this time potentially costing us millions of dollars. The bottom line is that the constant political infighting of elected leadership in this county shows a clear inability to govern in the best interest of our citizens and a massive waste of taxpayer-funded resources. If we're spending millions of dollars that Casely has previously refused to use to fund services that help real citizens, maybe there's an adult in this party who could step up and broker the peace. It's time to put aside petty differences and do what we, what all of you were elected to do. Mr. Casely said yesterday, "If you don't think people are pissed, they are really angry at me right now, the big guys, not the average citizens," and he claimed to be doing the work of the average citizen. Well, I'm an average citizen, and I'm pissed too. My final comment tonight is, please don't ever share your passwords.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Good evening, Josh Kozel, 1106 Emerald Drive, Bel Air, Maryland 21047. I know it's a late night tonight because of back-to-school in Fallston, but our community has each other's backs and proud to stand together with everyone since we have failed representation from you, Mr. Pennman. Let me be clear, the community does not want this project. Why should we help the developer who made a poor investment? The public hearing on 10/2 for the apartment, warehouse, and term limit bills needs to be split into different days, or a bigger venue needs to be addressed, potentially the high school. Continuing from my testimony last week with identifying and going on record about the ongoing issues with the project and why our community cannot support it, going to the volunteer, fire, and EMS. No fire access for a fire truck between the buildings causes a great risk and a safety concern. Also, where are the required fire hydrants to support this project? Lastly, the fire protection for the parking garage below apartments is of major concern, and the fire department has gone on record stating the same thing. Looking at the Harco water and sewer, is there an issue with water and sewer capacity with adding 100 units to this area? Next, the Department of Public Works and the stormwater management. This project should require a 100-year stormwater management system since it's in such close proximity to a FEMA 100-year proximity to a FEMA 100-year floodplain. Lastly, I want to remind everyone that the State Highway Administration has already rejected the initial traffic study and has requested a more extensive review. Just goes to show you how many issues that this project has caused and will create. It's time for District B to have representation, not the distractions, not the political games like you're meeting with the developer. It was very clear last meeting where your allegiance stands. 20 seconds for recovery month, and I'm so glad that it was celebrated tonight. 25 seconds for the community of Fawston, and over four minutes for the sheriff's office and your political games. Scott, this has to get better. Have a good evening.
Debbie Trench, followed by John Malamo.
Ma'am, there's no applauding in the chambers, ma'am. Name and address, please, ma'am.
I'm Debbie Trench, address 1705 Oakmont Road, Fawston. I'm not speaking about the apartments, but I'm totally against the apartments in Fawston, having lived there for 35 years. Just want to say that. I am here, actually, because I am totally frustrated with Hartford County Executive and Hartford County Parks and Recs in response to numerous emails over the past three years about pickleball in Hartford County. This is a really easy solution, a common sense thing. I finally got a response from Mr. Pennman. When I emailed him, he called me, and I was really surprised to actually get to talk to somebody. As our elected representatives and a bunch of our friends are here that play pickleball, we feel like we have nobody listening to us. We get no response or, well, actually, totally ignored with emails and requests. We've been to Parks and Rec meetings. I've been to pickleball advisory meetings, and nobody listens to us. I just found out this week that we have a Parks and Rec Advisory Council. When you go online to find out about their meetings, they tell you where they are and that they, not where they are, when they are, and that they're at 6 o'clock, but not where they are. Their minutes are not posted. They have no, nothing posted, not even an agenda since 2020. So I don't know what they do, or who they are, or how they know what we want as Hartford County residents, but that's not working. So Mr. Pennman suggested, maybe with my frustration, I could come and talk to you guys, because you should have something to say about how you spend our money, and it's our money that goes to Parks and Recs. So I have everything that I'm gonna say, that I can say in three minutes. I have a printout that I can give to each one of you, too, so for whatever I don't get to. But first off, Hartford County has spent $562,693 in 2022 and $602,100 on pickleball in 2023, and they're spending it spread throughout the county on dedicated courts that cost $45,000 or more to build, when they could much better spend that money by putting lines on all the courts that are already there that aren't at a high school. You can do that for $700, which the director of Parks and Recs had told us that's what that costs. So if that was coming out of your checkbook and your private budget, I don't think the money would be spent the way that Hartford County is spending it. We need more courts. We need multi-court complexes. This is a social sport. It involves people of all ages. It's exploding. It's up 158% over the past three years. The biggest growing age group are people under 21. It's gonna be in our schools. It's in our colleges. It's everywhere. So Hartford County needs to address it. They need to get lines on all the tennis courts. They need to address multi-court sites. They need to pay attention to the places where people are already playing. Fawston is crowded every weekend. Five courts going, chalked courts on the other tennis courts. We can't get lines there for some reason because Parks and Recs won't do it, and that would be so cheap. That's not a school site. You need to pay attention where the people are playing, the cheapest way to get the most courts, the most quick way to do that, because otherwise, people are going out of county to play.
Ms. Trench, your time is up, number one.
Okay.
Number two, Mr. Pennman gave you great advice, because Mr. Richardson is sitting here up front tonight. After this meeting, if you would approach him and give him your contact information and the copy of the document that you have with you.
Okay.
I'm sure that he will take it back to Mr. Magnus and get in touch with you.
Okay. Would love to have a voice, all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. John P. Malamo, 2402 Eagleview Drive. Reviewing the function of the Zoning Board of Appeals, this is how the process works by code and charter. The associated, the annotated code of Maryland requires the legislative body to provide for appointment of a zoning board of appeals. By county code and charter, the county council is designated as the board of appeals. By code, applications for variances, special exceptions, special developments, and reclassification shall be filed with the director of planning by the property owner, property owner's authorized agent, or contract purchaser. Applications for final determinations may be filed with the director of planning by any person. Filed applications are forwarded to the Board of Appeals for hearings. The final written determination of the director of planning shall be subject to appeal to the board by the applicant within 20 calendar days of the date of the decision. A decision from the Board of Appeals may be petitioned for judicial review to the Circuit Court of Hartford County. By charter, no person shall influence or attempt to influence directly or indirectly either the county council or one of its hearing examiners in arriving at a decision in any pending zoning case, except as that person may appear before the county council, sitting as the board of appeals, or one of its hearing examiners at a public hearing, and as a party or as a representative or witness on behalf thereof. By Zoning Board of Appeals rules and procedures, the Department of Planning and Zoning will issue a staff report setting forth factual information regarding a specific property, including, if any, zoning enforcement issues. The Director of Planning and Zoning is authorized to act in an administrative capacity on behalf of the board, nothing more. However, the Director of Planning and Zoning decides not to forward an application to the Zoning Board of Appeals and does not answer. In addition, in situations where the Director of Planning and Zoning does not forward the request or provide an answer, there can be no appeal to either the Zoning Board of Appeals or the Circuit Court of Hartford County. Residents are thereby denied administrative and judicial process to challenge land use and zoning decisions of the county executive. It would appear, under the latter circumstances, that the Director of Planning and Zoning simply and effectively circumvents authority of the Zoning Board of Appeals and renders decision for the Zoning Board of Appeals. Additionally, nowhere in the charter or code are there any provisions authorizing the county executive or any of the executive's subordinate agencies to screen or withhold applications from the Board of Appeals, or influence the board with a recommended outcome or make decisions for the board. Council President Vincenti, did you give the Director of Planning and Zoning authority to circumvent the Zoning Board of Appeals? If not, who? Who did? Please advise what legislative document was established to transfer that authority to the Director of Planning and Zoning. Good night.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you. With no more speakers, we'll move to Agenda Number 16, Business from Council Members. Mr. Guthrie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Some of the speakers have brought some information to the front. First, though, I want to let you know from the proclamation tonight, the National Recovery Month, the group that up here, the lady was the second to the end over here. Lydia Brennan was my legislative aide when I was on the council for the first go-around. So it was really good to see Lydia again. Also, on a couple of things, are you, were you at the town hall meeting in Edgewood at the community center?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I want to add this to the, I'm gonna piggyback the lady with the, with the pickleball problem, because we have the same, a bigger problem. I don't know if it's bigger, it's the same size, I guess, in, in Edgewood. And this came up at the town hall meeting that the county executive had with all his, all his, heads of his apartments there, when a couple of people got up and talked about the pickleball problem at the Edgewood Community Center that had been going on for a number of years. Inside the community center, we, we put a, we were able to get a basketball court thrown back, and they use it as a pickleball court also. And for some reason, they stopped it, and they lost the people to put it on, or whatever it is. I never really got an answer to why it stopped and why we can't get it started again. Also, it was rather, I don't know if the guy was correct in the two people talking about the pickleball program there, but he said that they, they were told that for them to continue the pickleball program, they were gonna have to pay $200 a year. Now, I don't know where else in the county, and maybe the lady has any information on that, I don't know, but they stated that nowhere else in the county do they charge for the pickleball program. And $200 is a lot, just to pay, play pickleball, you know, is, I think it's ridiculous, since the taxpayers pay for the community center, they, they pay for the whole kit and caboodle. Now they want them to pay $200 a year on top of it. So if you could get that information for me, I appreciate it. Also, talking about the...
Ma'am, you can't talk out, ma'am.
See me after. I'll be here. Also, talking about the APFO, we're working on a bill to attack that. Also, another one about 20 acres, that were 20-acre requirement on a construction site, which was removed from the, the law in 2017. I did a little research on it with help of our attorney here. In 2013, the law was put on the books that required that a contractor had to build up 20, whether he had 100 acres or whatever acres he had, to keep from poisoning and contaminating all our rivers and our streams and our, our waters, which is what is happening now because of that big construction site going on on 152. In 2013, was put into law that they could only do 20 acres at a time. You finish that, and you go to the next. That prevents all the runoff. Well, 2017, in the fall of 2017, very quietly, the law was removed, and it was nothing, no requirement put on there of anything. They just wiped it out. And, and that could have very easily snuck in without even knowing it. A lot of stuff comes across the desk there. It can happen, and that one sentence or one word out, and now it's nothing there. So that's why we wound up with the mess we have in our area. Covering, I attended the taping of the governor's education examining, education program he had over at Maryland Public Television on 9/13, September 13, on Wednesday, 3:00 p.m. I know it was by invitation, but what surprised me, there was several hundred people there. What surprised me about it is that I was the only one from Hartford County. Nobody else there, nobody else was from Hartford County. Couldn't find anybody there from Hartford County to listen to the governor speak for an hour, and then was televised that night on TV at, from 7:00, 8:00, on Channel 11. And I liked a lot of things that he had to say, particularly that he's talked about special ed, ed for kids, that he's, he's a heavy supporter for kicking in some more money for special education, and I appreciate that. Also, I was glad to go over to Maryland Public Television, because my son happens to work over there. He's been there for 15 years, so he got, he came and sat with him, and we watched the program. It was excellent. Without the other thing, myself and Jim Riley and Pat, we attended the Hartford Sewell Conservation District Annual Cooperators Dinner in Pond View Farms. And boy, that is one beautiful, you call it a barn, but man, it's one beautiful barn. If you've ever been there, it's a great place to have a wedding or event, and they'll run it to you, okay? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Pennman?
Thank you, Mr. President. The 315, 317 Mountain Road Work Group update, just to clarify, the objective of the work group is to provide suggestions to the property owner, developer, in an effort to lessen the impact of the community members' infrastructure, school capacity, and the environment in reference to the adequate public facilities. As Councilman Guthrie mentioned, there are discussions. I think Council President will speak on it, a possible meeting going forward, to express some of the concerns and hear from the community. I know I've spoke to Board of Ed member Wade Sewell, along with Dr. Bolson, to get some information and feedback about that impact, as well as did some research on the local impact of the recent developments in the Fawston area. Debbie just alonged to pickleball, so I'll continue to follow up on that and advocate for the pickleball courts, not just in Fawston or District B, throughout the whole county. Also, I think they had a healthy discussion last night at the school board concerning the start of school. I think there is a poll or a survey that's gonna be circulated about starting school before or after Labor Day. Sorry if I stole your thunder there. I was excited about that. And also, I think there are some discrepancies floating around social media circulating about the retirement package for the council members. I do have some documentation from the HR Director of the county. Says 10 years vested, council member is vested in the state pension system at 10 years and receives 1.5% per year. And I think everybody here is less than 10 years, other than Councilman Guthrie, who has returned. So going forward, I'm sure...
It's a different pension. It changed.
It changed. So I'm sure at 10 years...
Now it's a 401K. It was a pension 12 years ago.
They'll be vested. So with that, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Mr. Jan Giordano?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say it's National Hispanic Month. My girlfriend is Latino, so started September 15th, ends October 15th. So I attended the Town of Bel Air ECDC meeting. They have some great plans coming up for Winter Wonderland, the Bel Air Parade. That'll be forthcoming. The parade is the first Sunday in December. So in regards to Councilman Pennman's statement on the pension fund, if you sign up for a state pension, you have to be in it for 10 years to be vested. If you're not on the council for 10 years, any money that the county puts in, you would not receive. So no member signs up for the state fund. There is a 457B plan, which is a plan that you put money in, and the county will match some funds, but there is no pension plan currently that anybody signed up for. Previously, there was council members that were in a pension plan. I'm sure Chad was. He was a county employee before, and so was Joe Woods. But nobody is signed up in the pension plan, and they have to be vested for 10 years in order for them to qualify, but there's nobody signed up for that. So thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to congratulate David Keys for being recognized as the 2023 Cooperator of the Year. Also, our North Hartford High School Environment Team for winning the Maryland State Environment Competition, and they also placed 10th overall in the national. And I'd really like to give a shout out to a, to a young man, Bill Amos, who has educated me very much on the land preservation program. And myself and Councilman Guthrie and the president here gave him a proclamation for 33 years of service to Hartford County and to the citizens. So Bill Amos, congratulations, and thank for all you do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Ms. Sodles?
Thank you. It is recovery month, and it's especially dear to my heart, as I'm on the Board of Directors for the Homecoming Project, which is a safe home for women in the area. I was able to attend the gala last week, and it was a great success, and they're really making a difference for the women around our county and others. I'd like to address an issue that's been percolating for some time, and it's become painfully obvious. Both this council and the administration have been engaged in back-and-forth attacks to the detriment of our citizens. Certainly, we won't always agree with each other, and some citizens won't agree with my vote and others here. But for the good of the county, I implore everyone on this dais to communicate openly and work together for the good of our county. I pledge to remain open to meet with anyone and all of you to discuss any matters, and I would like the same from my colleagues. So with that, have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Mr. Bennett?
Hello. Hard thing about being in District F is everybody else...
Hard thing about being in District F is everybody else covers all the months and celebrations, but there was one that wasn't brought up, which is International Underground Railroad Month. We presented a proclamation to the Maritime Museum, and for those who haven't been to the Maritime Museum over in Havney Grace, it's a really, really great museum. A couple of their exhibits are recognized by National Park Service, and one of those that we just presented a proclamation to this past weekend is in recognition to our local connection to the Underground Railroad and our local story and history in regards to that. It's beautifully done, incredible artwork, and so much to read and learn. So I really recommend the Maritime Museum, and while you're at it, walk the promenade, check out the decoy museum, get some ice cream, and enjoy the town, like my wife and I do every day. Beyond that, I also just wanted to make sure everybody knows that my office, in partnership with Harford Community College and the Discovery Center at Waters Edge, is going to be hosting a workforce education night. It's an opportunity for businesses and those who are hoping to advance their career to get connected and to find out about the resources Harford Community College through Dr. Hill is offering to help you get connected with quality work and quality employees. So I'm excited for that opportunity, and I hope that it's something that can grow and become something that could be done multiple times in the future. But that's all for me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Agenda Item 15, business from the President. As you heard from everybody, we've been extremely busy, and this past week has been both rewarding and concerning at the same time. You've heard of several of the events that we've attended, the Route 40 Business Association Luncheon, the Harford County Sewell Conservation Banquet, the Harford County Sheriff's Office Correctional Deputy's Graduation. I had the honor and pleasure to present a proclamation to Gertrude Hawkins on behalf of Councilman Bennett. She's 104 years old, still very attentive, and enjoyed the visit there. Also got to visit a good friend of mine who was there as well. Visited the EOC Center on Saturday for the Harford County Public Safety Day, Oktoberfest in Aberdeen. This also is the National Preparedness Month, and I had the opportunity, as I said, to be at the EOC this weekend, and Ms. Ploner gave me this, this folder here, and she and all of her partners, Rick Ayers, Bernike Woods, all of them do an outstanding job there in making sure that the citizens of Harford County are protected to the best of their abilities. You've heard a couple of people talk about the APFO. We are definitely going to be hosting another meeting here on October the 12th at 6:00 PM. I believe the crowd will be big enough that we will take it from the board room upstairs, and we'll bring it down here in the chambers, we've reserved the chambers. That meeting is open to the public. I've invited several members from other organizations, not only the APF Board, but also members from the administration, members from Dr. Bolson's office, PTAs, a couple members from the citizens, citizens that have spoke passionately about APFO. So we are going to take a look at that, and hopefully we will get some pros and cons in reference to the APFO numbers and move forward from there. This past Monday evening, I was made aware of the access that our county auditor has had been cut off, and our auditor does an outstanding job, Ms. Crystal Brooks, she went to counsel attorney, counsel attorney brought it to my attention, and for four days, back and forth with the administration, working to get it reinstated. All the, the charter, Section 213 of the county charter, talks about the auditor and her role in county government, and the fact that she has to have unfettered access to all of the financial documents throughout. And it's imperative that we protect that, it's imperative that we make sure that she has that access. On Friday evening, the administration notified me after a meeting with Council Attorney Mr. Kearney and with Ms. Brooks, that the access had been reinstated, and I was glad to hear that. But I started reaching out to my council members on Wednesday to let them know that the access had been interrupted, and just to make them aware that we were moving forward trying to get it back in place, which we did, and I'm pleased to have that done. And I think that's really, I think, the biggest part of it. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware. It is, it is our job to protect all of the folks that work underneath this council, from the Health Department, to Harford Cable Network, to the Zoning Appeals Board, the APF Board, everybody that falls under us, and I'm sure I've missed somebody, but it's important that we protect them and their role for the county, make sure that they serve the citizens to the best of their ability. And with that, I will draw this meeting to a close. Thank you.